Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us for this episode of Inside Austin's Agenda. I'm your host Grace Reader and today we are joined by one of three of the newest city council members on the dais, Mike Siegel. Thank you so much for joining us today, really appreciate it.
Well, thanks so much Grace, great to be here.
So, as I said, this is a bit of a different format. Folks get to hear a lot more from you. So let's jump right into what's going on federally. That's a lot about what we're talking about here at KXAN is some of the federal actions that have been taken under the Trump administration. For you all at the city level, this is obviously a very unique time for you to be in this role. What has that been like so far?
Well, obviously there's a lot of uncertainty, a lot of risk right now about whether certain federal dollars will actually make it all the way here. I think so far we feel pretty good about how our congressional delegation is doing in terms of delivering funding. You know, most of the so-called earmarks have arrived except for those in the most recent year. You know, some of the climate funding focused on solar panels was able to get here. But there's some other things that are really outstanding that impact, you know, our refugee services, public health programs, even the cap and stitch program for our freeway. So there's still a fair amount of doubt. One of the things we do feel good about though is we have a great government relations team that's working with all the stakeholders to make sure Austin gets as much as it needs.
Talk about that team and how they help you all track all that's going on at the federal and the state level.
Sure, I mean, you know, most people don't think of it this way, but city council, we really just have one person we supervise, the city manager. But the city manager has brought on a great government relations team led by Kerry Rogers. And their job is to follow all the bills, both state and federal, that impact the city. And so they are constantly giving us updates, they're informing city staff about what needs to be done maybe to provide testimony or formation to different committees. And they're keeping us in the loop as it impacts, you know, budgetary decisions and other key city decisions.
We know that this is not the first time that the city of Austin's had to react to a Trump administration. During the previous administration, city council members did something unique in going beyond being a sanctuary city and instead did something called being a freedom city. Is there anything being discussed right now in terms of actions that the city might take to respond to direct things happening at the federal level that you know about?
I think we're just trying to take each issue as it comes and act appropriately in accord with the law. For what, for better or for worse, the legal context prevents us from doing some of the things that maybe the 2017 city council did. And so, of course, we don't want to jeopardize our funding. We don't want to give the state any reason to, for example, adopt a district of Austin policy which was recently defeated. So really, in each area, we're advocating for why it's a responsible use of public dollars, whether it's money relating to transportation, money relating to climate, money relating to public health. We're explaining patiently to legislators, no, we're not doing anything crazy here. We're just trying to take care of the people of Austin.
You have a unique perspective in that with your previous role working at the city as an attorney. How does that help you sort of navigate some of those legal challenges that the city may be facing?
No, it's a real blessing, you know. For several years I worked as a litigator defending Austin's policies and in some cases suing others in pursuit of our policy objectives. And I was the lawyer who represented the city as we challenged some of the anti-immigration laws of 2017. And so I'm acutely aware of what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do, what is within our First Amendment, you know, area of protection, what's within our local control, and what if we, you know, exceed in terms of legislative point of view, what will bring serious repercussions. So obviously I want to live up to our values as a city. You know, Austin, we have a policy, we declare ourselves a welcoming city. And that includes for all immigrants, right? And so we really try to live up to that. But we don't want to do anything that will jeopardize our funding or autonomy.
Do you think sometimes people in the community don't realize that, the restrictions in which the city has to abide by?
Oh, certainly. You know, we just had a ICE raid a few blocks from my home over the weekend and had a lot of community members reach out to me, what can you do about this? Stand up for us. And, you know, for me, really caring about the impacts of some of these immigration actions, not just on the person who was targeted, but on their family members, their neighbors, of course I want to do as much as we can. And so in that instance, the best I could do was make contact with affected neighbors, talk to local school leaders to make sure that any students who are impacted are being cared for, figure out what public health resources we can offer, but to make sure to stay within our lawful authority.
What are, what is some of that lawful authority that you really need to make sure that you're treading within the bounds of the law on?
Well, the most clear law is what was called Senate Bill 4 in 2017, which was basically the Republican Party's response to the sanctuary city movement. And that law prohibits any local policy that would interfere with state or federal immigration authority. And so that's where you can't quote unquote be a sanctuary city. You know, we can't use our police officers to disrupt ICE enforcement, things of that nature. Or, you know, frankly, our chief of police could lose his law enforcement license or her law enforcement license. We could have funding taken away from our city. And so that's kind of the balance, you know, SB 4 and other state legislative efforts that constrain our local control. We have to stay within those parameters and still do as much as we can.
You talked at the beginning a little bit about the budget and things at the federal level that are happening that might impact the city of Austin's budget. What do you anticipate the kind of process or the budget process will look like later this year as a result?
Well, overall, most of our funding is locally generated. So that's the good news. You know, one of the things I feel best about as a city is that we are a big city, we're a strong city, and we have a lot of resources to take care of our own community. And so even if we lose a hundred million dollar grant here and there, which to be clear, would really hurt, right? It would cut seriously needed programs. There's still a lot we can do. And so next week, we expect the city manager to present the budget forecast, which is, you know, the projected income from property tax, sales tax, and other sources. And that will give us a sense of, do we need to make cuts? Do we need to stay level? Can we raise our spending a little bit? And then we'll have a few months to sort out, you know, which of these different programs are we really going to emphasize? Because for example, under President Biden, there was these relief plan dollars that were used to benefit our homeless services and help get people off the streets, into housing, into jobs, things of that nature. And those programs have been lost. So we're going to have to figure out how we can replace those funding streams and still, you know, take care of the people in the way we want to.
Well, I want to continue to talk about the budget a little bit, but we need to go to a break first. So we're going to do that and we'll be right back. Welcome back to Inside Austin's Agenda. We are continuing our conversation with Austin City Council member Mike Siegel. We're talking a little bit about the budget and the process in which you all are doing this year. Some of the conversations that have been had early are about how, as you mentioned, the city needs to replace that pandemic relief funding and what that's going to do in the future. Homelessness has also been something that you all voted to be a top priority. So how do you see that ARPA conversation, American Rescue Plan Act, and also sort of that priority that is homelessness playing out as you move forward?
It has to be a top priority and it has to be a multi-layered approach. You know, some people are aware that I was a bit of an opponent of the recent police contract decision which allocated a lot of money to raises for existing police officers. But now that that decision is made, we have to figure out what else we can do to address homelessness because policing is not really a solution. It's a stopgap in certain instances. And so we need to make sure we're supporting our homeless strategies office. There's an array of community-based organizations that receive funding through our public health department. We need to make sure that those contracts stay strong and supported. We need to figure out housing. And so this relates to our general fund budget, which we'll be voting on this summer and fall. But also our capital budget, which is a big conversation that's happening right now. Next year, we expect to go to voters with a series of bond proposals to fund an array of necessary programs. Some of it is very basic, like how do we fix our leaky pipes? How do we make sure that our drainage can handle the growth and density in our city and make sure that flood isn't a big risk? But also, how can we build more housing? We've basically allocated all of the housing dollars that voters have approved in recent years. And we still have thousands of people who are living on the streets who don't have access to affordable housing. And so we need to continue to make investments in that area. And so we've got a series of big decisions coming up. Actually, one that's going to come up before the budget cycle is on this thing called cap and stitch. And I don't know if you're following that. But as we expand the freeway, there's a set of proposals that would put covers on the freeway and allow for parks and other amenities to be built on top of the freeway. But those are extremely expensive. If we built all the ones proposed, it would cost 1.4 billion dollars or more. And that would use up our entire capital budget. And so we really have to be careful in the investments we're making, both in terms of our annual general fund decisions as well as our capital budget decisions.
So let's break down some of the things you talked about in there, starting with the cap and stitch. We know that that's one of the things that these federal cuts may impact is some of the money that has been allocated for that project, a little more than a hundred million dollars of, as you said, what will likely be a more than a billion dollar project, all said and done. But there's also some layers to this, right? So the city council first needs to get in and talk to text dot and can, you know, tell text dot that they want the structures to be built and then can build on top of those. So what discussions are you all going to have about which of those layers can be funded sooner and what might need to be held off until later?
That's right. And I think the public really does need to get engaged with this cap and stitch conversation, even though it's a little wonky. There's basically five different types of expenditures that are being asked for. Design, then the roadway elements, which you mentioned, then the covers, the decks as they're called, then the amenities, that's like if you want to build anything nice on top of this concrete deck. And then finally, there's the annual operating and maintenance. And so that's where, if we did it all, the whole 26 acres of caps, you're talking about 1.4 billion in capital? And then maybe another 1.3 billion in annual operating over 50-year cycle? So it's a massive projected expenditure. And what I want to get into is whether that's worth it compared to the trade-offs. Because we have a very strong financial department, you know, CFO and financial services team at the city. And what they're telling us is that we can only ask for so much in bond dollars before our credit rating goes down and the price of debt goes up, basically. And so every hundred million that we dedicate to the cap and stitch is instead of something else that we might need. And so there's going to be a major vote in May where city council is basically going to decide how much we're going to commit to text dot just to fund the roadway elements. And that could be 250 million dollars by itself, which would be a quarter of our capital budget. And so to me, that's something I really want to study and talk to my peers and talk to the public about, about whether this is really a top priority for Austin.
So moving forward, if there's only so much that the city can borrow in caps and stitches, perhaps becomes one of those things. And you are also talking about a proposal for a bond package in 2026. How do you balance what might be in that bond proposal, what might be needed for the caps and stitches? How do you balance all of that?
Well, it's a really complicated decision to make, right? I guess that's why we get the big bucks here on council, or not so big bucks. But there's actually several processes happening right now. So the city manager is facilitating a process with all of the city departments to identify their unmet capital needs. And they're being asked to bring their top priorities to a series of meetings where it's all being hashed out internally. Then separately, there's a citizen advisory committee called the Bond Election Advisory Task Force. That's me, it's 22 appointed citizens of Austin who are meeting monthly and they're meeting with basically experts and kind of representatives of different constituencies to evaluate all the different needs. And so within that, there's going to be a lot of politicking, both in the, you know, staff level, the community level, the council level. And this is where community groups really have a big role to play. There's some folks who care about parkland who are organizing. There's some folks who want a housing bond who are organizing. And they're going to have to speak up and make their voices heard. Because as I mentioned, we have about 10 billion in unmet capital needs. We can only spend a billion at most, or ask for a billion at most in expenditures. And so there's going to be some serious trade-offs.
What would your priorities be? You know, I know you want to hear from the community, but right now, what would you say your priorities are?
Well, you know, two things I would emphasize. One, housing is, you know, one of the top issues in the city, the cost of housing, affordability. And we have, as a city council, you know, before I got on and continuing, adopted code reforms to make it easier to build housing. But alongside this density, we need infrastructure. And infrastructure means a lot of things. It does mean flood control, drainage, which is not a very sexy item, but we might have 2 billion dollars in unmet drainage needs as a city. Just in District 7 in the Brentwood Crestview area, there's a 50 million dollar project that's needed to fix the drainage issues. So that might need to be a big item. But another thing is affordable housing, right? We need to build more housing and the market is not going to build enough housing for lower-income working-class people. And that's where, it's not official public housing that we're building, but we're building subsidized housing where the city puts in some of the money to guarantee that at least some of the units will be permanently affordable. And that's where we do need to make continued investments to basically mitigate against this housing crisis.
You all are working on some housing items right now. First is sort of an overall broad picture. I never thought that I was going to hear Vice President J.D. Vance use Austin as an example for housing reform that is working, but that did happen. We've got a story on kxan.com with those comments if you don't believe me. But, you know, sort of with what Austin has done with home, with getting rid of parking requirements. As someone who's coming in with fresh eyes and now the city's working through some additional changes, what do you see as things that maybe need to be tweaked or things that you would like to see moving forward?
Well, you know, I'm generally supportive of these land use reforms. The way I see it, you know, Austin's land use code was built for a much smaller city from decades ago. And now we're this, you know, metropolis, a million people and growing. And so it makes sense to change how we do the zoning process. Just to take my neighborhood, I live in Crestview. It used to be the northern limit of Austin and now it's central city. So we don't want cars speeding through. We want it to be more of a walkable neighborhood. So I support that generally. But I'm also aware that these reforms are still dependent upon the market. We're trying to give signals to developers and builders, build more middle-class housing, more affordable housing. But it's not guaranteed that the market will produce the housing we want. For example, a huge number of Austin workers can't afford to live in the city they work in. And so to me, that's where we're going to need to continue to subsidize and provide other incentives to get that really truly affordable housing. And so I say I'm generally in support of these so-called urbanist ideas, but I'm skeptical and kind of realistic that it's not going to be enough by itself to get the kind of equitable diversity of housing that we really want.
So what would you like to see moving forward, to sort of force some of that?
Well, I think one, in the next bond cycle, if, you know, if we can dedicate 10 to 20% of the bond dollars towards more affordable housing, that would be a great investment. We've got a vote coming up on a so-called preservation bonus where if you have a big lot like we do in Allendale, Crestview and Brentwood, and you've got an existing house, that we provide some sort of incentive to not knock that house down. And that's something I've heard a lot about. Just my own neighbor is writing into me now that I'm on city council and saying, can you believe it? They're knocking down this beautiful three-bedroom, two-bath home. You know, 99% of the world would love to live in that house. Why are they destroying it? Look how wasteful that is. And that's one of these things where, you know, ultimately, these are private decisions, private property owners making decisions on how to use their property. But we want to incentivize conserving the existing housing stock and continue to make that available to the people.
So talk about that preservation bonus. You all had a hearing yesterday. Talk about what that means for people.
So it's a, it's a very wonky thing where if you live on a lot that's big enough to build two or three homes and you want to keep that existing lot, or sorry, existing home, it gives you a little more room to build larger second and third homes. And really by larger, I mean taller. So none of these rules change what's called impervious cover, which is a very important regulation we have in Austin to make sure that our ground is absorbing the water and preventing flooding. So we're not tinkering with that, but we are saying if you preserve the existing house, the second and third homes maybe can go up a story to give you a little more room to invest in.
We're going to talk about some of the things that Austin City Council is working through right now when we get back from break. We will be right back. Welcome back to this afternoon's episode of Inside Austin's Agenda. We're continuing our conversation with Austin City Council member Mike Siegel. And we're talking about some of the things that city council is working through right now. You all have a council meeting next week. Is there anything on there that you think people should be watching or want to flag?
Oh man, this is like a test. I have read the agenda and, well, you know, the thing that's getting a lot of attention from some of the advocates is this idea of single stair. So bigger picture, we are updating a lot of our codes to comply with international standards. And some of those codes relate to fire safety. And the way it works right now in Austin, if you're trying to build a small building and you build it three stories, you can have a single stairwell. But if you go to a fourth story, you need two stairwells. And basically this rule is why we have a lot of these large apartment complexes with long corridors. Because the only way to make it cost-effective with two stairwells is to build basically a massive building. And what the advocates say is this is preventing us from having more so-called missing-middle housing. The idea that, you know, cute little eight-unit, four-story apartment complexes where you have windows on multiple sides of the apartment. Those are not cost-effective when you need to build two stairwells. And basically, most of the world allows for single stairwell buildings. You could go to Amsterdam, you could go to Seattle, you can go to all these places, New York City, where you have these kind of smaller, more manageable-sized apartment complexes that are narrow, might just have four units per floor and have a single stairwell. And so this is a reform that's being pushed by folks who want more density and I'm generally in favor of it. I think the key question for council is whether we allow single-stair buildings that are five stories or six stories. And so the compromise that I believe is being proposed is let's allow five stories now and let's study the safety issues related to six stories. And this goes back to the kind of infrastructure issue I mentioned earlier, you know, we need drainage infrastructure to match density. Well, we also need fire department infrastructure to match density. And in this case, the fire department is telling us they don't necessarily have the ladder trucks that can get to the sixth story. And so obviously, we want to make sure any housing people is safe. And so that's why we're going to listen to the fire department.
How challenging is it to read all of the items on the agenda every other week? Go through all of the things that are in those very intense agenda items and be ready to speak on them and vote on them?
You know, I really enjoy it. I'm one of these like policy wonks and I'm kind of a generalist in terms of, I like learning about all these different areas of policy, whether it's animal services, police, housing. So, you know, what's been kind of a learning curve for my office is kind of getting into the cadence. Okay, the agenda is posted 12 days beforehand, Friday afternoon at 3 o'clock. The next week, you want to really digest the agenda, figuring out where you have questions, get those questions into city staff. And then the part that's even more nuanced is like working with the other council offices. Because, you know, there's all these norms that I'm learning. You know, if a project is in your district, maybe I shouldn't tinker with it as much, or maybe I should check with you before I make an amendment, things of that nature. So there's a lot of things that are maybe political, like a lowercase p point of view, like kind of office politics point of view, but which are also important, right? Because we want to have trust among different offices. I don't want other council offices to feel like I'm trying to make them look bad. And so that's also goes into the preparation for each meeting.
How many staff members do you all have helping you do this? Or is it really just you and the other council members trying to sort through all of this?
No, this is where our city council in Austin is blessed. We have budgets where we can have four or five full-time people. And that's more than a state representative in Texas. And it's actually necessary because just the land use stuff by itself, you know, housing, zoning, transportation, is a full-time job. And that's then public health, public safety, homelessness, you know, there's all these areas of policy. I'm the vice chair of the Austin Energy Oversight Committee, electric policy, you know, solar power, batteries, all these things. And so we do need a team. And that's not even talking about all the people that write in. You know, we get hundreds of emails a week, maybe hundreds, if not dozens of phone calls. We got people asking for meetings. And so there's a lot to do.
So I think it was, was it you last week who addressed people saying like, you don't listen to us when you're on the dais? Was that you? Am I getting that?
It was, yeah.
So let's talk about that because it's something that I hear from people who are not involved in city council at all is, well, they're not going to listen to me anyways. Talk about when you're up there first and foremost, you know, what you're doing to listen to those folks and take notes and take action on what they're telling you.
You know, I feel really blessed to have this job where I get paid to work in city hall and have a team and to try to do what's right and what's best for our city. And so I take it very seriously and I feel like everyone on council is coming from a similar place. We might have different strategies for representing our constituents, but I think everyone's well-meaning and hardworking. And so the comment last week was essentially, we're not making eye contact with the speaker, so therefore we're not listening. And the way I responded was kind of multi-layered. I mean, one, the person who said that is someone that speaks every meeting five times a meeting. And so when you're saying the same thing every week, come on. But more broadly, I did want to take the criticism seriously because what I'm doing during these meetings is I have a computer screen in front of me with the agenda and all the backup information. If you ever go to the city council information center, every agenda item has multiple reports that are associated with it, ordinances, backup information as it's called. And so I'm looking at that. I'm trying to track the comments and connect them to what we have in our backup information. We also have people who come in on public comment and raise issues that I haven't heard about. So for example, one speaker mentioned that a bus stop in northeast Austin is unsafe. And it was in front of a charter school and it's in District 7. And so I was looking up that charter school, trying to find the bus stop, asking a staff member who deals with transportation issues for me to figure out, how do we make sure that we have a safe bus stop? So it's multitasking. And I could see how if you're speaking to us and we're not making continuous eye contact, you might, I don't know, be a little cynical, like, oh, they're ignoring me. But I think generally you should have faith that we're doing the best we can to actually respond to what's being said. So sometimes that means we need to be communicating with our team while you're talking to make sure we can come up with a response.
Folks are, you know, don't want to come down to council, can't take time out of their day on a Thursday. What's the best way for people to get in touch with your office?
So we have a city website and, you know, if you look up city of Austin, District 7, Mike Siegel, our page will come up that has our staff contact. There's a general feed for District 7 issues. We also have my staff members' contact. So you can send an email, you can call by phone, you can even tag us on social media. We respond all sorts of ways. And we do try to respond to everything. I mean, that's something I've been learning. You know, all the different layers of communication outreach. We even had a tech issue where for a while, these emails through the website were going into spam. Which was really a bummer because it was like a thousand emails that took us several weeks to respond to and we felt really bad about that. But if you reach out to our office, we will respond.
So just to hit back on that point, when folks reach out to you, you are listening, you are getting those emails, you're taking those calls, those things do get to you.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, we talk to dozens of people every week. I mean, if you send one of these emails where 100 people are pressing a button, lobby your city council, we more keep a tally, oh, we got 100 emails in support of the single stair amendment. We're not going to like, you know, personalize a response to all those people. But if you reach out and say, hey, my neighbor has a big garbage pile and it's got all these rats and, yeah, we're going to take that seriously. And we have a number of ways. Of course, people can call 311 directly to get help with a lot of things. But we have ways to kind of flag issues for city departments and make sure they get a response.
Sort of to wrap up here, talk to me a little bit about your priorities for this first year. You've been in this role now for a few months. But what can people expect from you moving forward?
Well, a hard-working, progressive voice on council. I mean, yeah, the first few months has been hiring my staff, figuring out how everything works. We're going to try to lead on climate issues. That's a big area of concern for me. For example, our electric utility has set a goal of adding 250 megawatts of solar in local power generation in 10 years. And to give you a picture of that, one megawatt of power requires 13 acres of solar panels. So we're talking about adding maybe close to 4,000 acres of solar panels across the city in the next 10 years. And we want to make sure that happens and that we want to make sure local folks get those jobs and those are good-paying, you know, safe workplace jobs to install that solar. And also, we want to make sure there's batteries to store that power. And all of this is going to help us be more resilient, help us respond to extreme weather, help us reduce our climate impact, be a leader for our city. help us reduce our climate impact, be a leader for others across the state and the South. And so that's one big area. But just in general, I also want to be someone that when something pops up on the agenda, and a lot of this is driven by staff, not by council, that I'm going to be someone that digs in and reaches out to the community and brings a variety of voices to bear to try to solve problems and really help people.
Well, Councilmember Mike Siegel, I really appreciate you taking the time to do this. This is a fun format where we get to like really hear from people and talk for a longer time, so I appreciate you taking the time to do this, and we'll continue to follow you on the dais and on council, so we'll be talking quite frequently as the city hall reporter and someone new to city council, but I appreciate you doing this.
Well, thanks so much Grace, really enjoyed this.
Absolutely.